Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners Meeting for January the 11th, 2018, and may we have a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I have two announcements to make. The first one is in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King memorial service and adoption of Resolution Number 18-004. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was a man committed to peaceful coexistence where all men would be freed from racism, bigotry, and discrimination, and whereas many people look to the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. as a source of inspiration for promoting harmony, cooperation, and understanding, and whereas the third Monday in January has been declared a national holiday, and on that day, January 15th, 2018, Abington Township will conduct a memorial service at 12 noon, which will be attended by civic, religious, school, and government leaders, and whereas a citizen of Abington Township will be honored as the 33rd annual recipient of the Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial Award. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township does hereby proclaim January the 15th, 2018, as Martin Luther King Day, and encourages all interested citizens to participate in the Township Memorial Service resolved this 11th day of January 2018 respectfully the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township. Thank you. I have another announcement to make at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda this evening is considering the request by BET Investments for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Along with this text amendment request is a request to amend the zoning map as well. Before we begin tonight's meeting and before Mr. Coles, who is representing BET Investments, begins their presentation later on in the agenda, I will address why this matter is on our agenda this evening. The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code and the Township of Abington zoning ordinance provides that consideration of amendments to the Township zoning code, as we have before us this evening, are allowed at the sole legislative discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Thus, tonight, we are seeking limited information from the applicant so that the Board can determine whether they will consider this request and begin the public process of reviewing the proposed text amendment and map change. This necessarily takes place prior to this Board of Commissioners formally authorizing any ordinance to be advertised, and in the interest of assuring that the public's opportunity to participate in the decision-making process is maximized, and to assure that the myriad of details inherent to a proposal such as this are thoroughly reviewed, all of which will occur subsequent to tonight's representation should the Board decide to proceed this evening. So with that, we'll move into our formal agenda. First, I'd like to call on Chief John Livinggood, our Chief of Police, followed by Commissioner Carol Gillespie for presentations.
Thank you, President Luker. Every single day at their school in Abington Township, there's 27 dedicated individuals who help keep our children safe. Tonight, we're going to tell you a story about one of those 27. Bobby Lawfer, Barbara, actually, she likes to be called Bobby, started her career as a crossing guard in May of 1976. She stood at the corner of Penn Avenue on Janketown Road, excuse me, and crossed the children there. She was faithful, she was dedicated, she was loyal, she was out there, her greatest concern was for the safety of those children. Bobby served for 40 years. This last May, when she finished her assignment over there, she went food shopping and tragically had an auto accident she did not survive from. So tonight, I'd like to call up, first of all, Mary Carmenati, and I'd like to call up the family of Bobby Lawfer.
This is her husband, Frederick Fritz, her sons Robert and Rick, and their children, and her sister Janet right here, and her best friend, Heidi Mark, who you may know as a reporter. And her best friend.
So Mary Carmenati, as you know, is supervisor of our crossing guard. She makes sure these people are out there on duty all the time, well uniformed, well prepared, well equipped, and ready to go. And so tonight, we have a presentation that we're going to give to the family of Bobby.
Presented to the family of Barbara Lawfer in recognition of her 40 years of dedicated service to the children of Abington, and this was taken last year on Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, which this year is February 14th.
Thank you, Frederick. Anything else you'd like to say, sir? Okay, thank you. Bobby is a proud resident of Commissioner Gillespie's word, and the post that she stood at Penn Avenue and Janketown Road for those 40 years splits Commissioner Zepone's word and Commissioner Thompson's word. And so she has proudly served the residents of Abington Township, but her primary concern is for the safety of our children. So for that, we applaud her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Livinggood. At this time, we normally announce public comment on agenda items. However, we do not have committee meetings in January, therefore, public comment will be allowed after each agenda item this evening. So at this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for, one, approval of the minutes, and also for the appointments of specific boards, commissions, and positions that are before us. First, we'd like to take a brief intermission while some of our participants leave the room.
There are no agendas out there. There were no agendas when we came in. If somebody would check the agendas, and they're going to do that now, and also if they can bring in more chairs, because we seem to regularly have people in the hall, and yet we have all this space that I think if we rearranged for more chairs would work. And also, I had a question about what you said prior, just a minute ago, and I would like to ask that now rather than, because I have other discussion for that particular item.
No, wait till the agenda item in which you want to speak comes up, and then you can speak accordingly.
But what you did, you carefully worded it and still did not say, you said this would be done before it was advertised. Are they asking yes for a hearing or not?
No, wait till that time comes. Please sit down.
Well, you did just explain it, but you missed that.
Let the agenda play out like we formulated it. Thank you. Okay, as I said previously, I'll call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes, and also for the appointments of our specific boards, commissions, and positions that are open.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to first offer a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' special meeting of December 14th, 2017, adopting the 2018 final budget and the December 14th, 2017 regular scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners, from staff? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Then I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-005, Appointing Deputy Tax Collector as Carol Thrasher.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners, staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry. Residents? Yes.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So we're appointing a deputy commissioner, and I'm assuming, or deputy tax collector and treasurer, but I'm assuming that's because Mr. Blumenthal will therefore not be there at the job. In other words, that he can then take over at that point. That has been one of the chief complaints that I have through three different managers at this point, discuss the fact that the finances of the tax office are written in gobbledygook, so they cannot actually be parsed. When I made a chart so that they could easily be parsed, I was refused the information that was needed to fill that chart. And then, the next year, the duties of the tax collector were all different so that other fees and so on were in there, so the chart was no longer valid. Instead of accommodating a request that shows that the income from the tax office cannot properly be charted so that you can compare what this tax collector is charging you versus what another tax collector might charge you, when you make it that way, there is no way, there's no way to compare it. And you have a fiduciary duty to the residents in this township to manage their money properly. And I would hope that hearing this should be inspiration enough for you to work with the residents that would like to get that corrected and to have some improvement on that. So if, for instance, there are five or six people working in the tax office, the tax collector might not have to do anything. And if you now deputize somebody who can come in his place, and perhaps he doesn't even have to come to meetings. So those are things that have a lot to do with how taxpayers are being charged. So I would urge you, please, to work with me to get that changed, and I would urge against this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public?
May I make a comment?
Not now.
Not now?
No.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And President Luker, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 18-006, Appointing the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer as Jay Blumenthal and Carol Thrasher.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff?
Wait, I have a question.
Commissioner Myers.
This, the way this is being presented, it makes it look like that this is a new appointment for Carol Thrasher, and it is not. And Carol has worked in the tax office for how many years?
Twelve.
Twelve. And you've been deputy tax collector and deputy treasurer for how many years?
2010.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners, staff? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
And the last appointment, Commissioner, President Luker, is the appointment of our Township Engineer for Mike Powers as interim until a successor is appointed, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners, staff, residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes the appointments and the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Vice President Stephen Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hecker, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Works Committee has one item of business this evening. This is PW1, and it is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-008, Accepting and Approving the Right-of-Way Plans for the Edgehill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Reconstruction Project, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Klein?
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but it's related to the Edgehill Tyson. Where are we at, where are we with the eminent domain properties? Have we gotten a progress report on those?
And I'm sure that Commissioner Zepone of Gillespie will correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe we have 100 percent signatures.
That's great.
Wow. Excellent.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Good job.
I'm done.
Okay, any other questions or comments from commissioners, any from staff, any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, President Luker. That concludes the business of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have one item. This would be the aforementioned motion to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance request by BET Investments. And I believe that, as you said, the applicant is here and intends to make a brief presentation. Counsel for the applicant.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I certainly.
Good evening. My name is Joe Coles, as was stated at the start of the meeting, and I'm here this evening on behalf of BET Investments. As you know, BET made an application for a zoning ordinance amendment, which you described at the commencement of the hearing relative to a five-acre parcel near the corner of Old York and Susquehanna Roads. Most of you know it as the YMCA property and the Hellwig and Rowland Funeral Home. The proposal is to develop the property for senior apartments. The rezone application we've submitted, as you described, is both a request for a change to your map and a request for modifications to the text of the regulations applicable in the AO Apartment Office District. With me this evening is Mr. Pete Cleland. Pete is a professional engineer, and he's the Director of Development for BET. Pete's here to briefly describe the project for you and to answer any questions you may have. But before he does, I just want to restate what you already stated, Mr. Chairman, quite eloquently, which is why we're here this evening. We're not asking for any formal action from this board. We're not asking for any approval. We're not asking for any authorization to advertise. We're here in the interest of complete transparency, to make a public appearance announcing to the community that this process is just starting, and to make them aware of all the opportunities they'll have to provide feedback, which I'll go through in just a moment. We're also here right at the start to publicly ask the board to please accept and process the application. As you mentioned, we're very aware that unlike a building permit application, unlike a zoning hearing board application, unlike even a land development application, you're under no obligation to hear a request for a rezone at all. There's no deemed approval process applicable, so we're here this evening, again, with complete transparency, to ask you to please allow the application to simply move forward, that you allow staff to schedule us for your Public Planning Commission meeting that's occurring, I believe, on January 23rd, and we'll appear there, and there'll be ample opportunity to explore the proposal and to accept feedback from the community. Let us go, please, to your Code Committee meeting on January 31st, and we'll make another presentation, and there'll be, again, ample opportunity to explore the proposal and allow the community to weigh in with their concerns and to respond to those concerns. Then and only then would we return to you with an ordinance that had been vetted through that entire process to your meeting one month from now on February 8th, and then hopefully, if things go as we hope they will go, we'll be asking you on February 8th to authorize advertisement of those two ordinances I described. One, proposing an amendment to the map, and two, proposing amendments to the text of the regulations applicable in the Apartment Office District. So that's really it in a nutshell. We're at the beginning, we're at the beginning of the beginning. And as I said, we're here just to describe the process, let people know they're going to have an opportunity to be heard, and ask you to please just accept the application and send it on. So unless you have any questions for me about what I just said, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Cleland and have him describe the proposal briefly for you, please.
Do any commissioners have any questions at this point? Proceed, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cleland?
Yep. As Joe mentioned, my name's Peter Cleland. I'm a professional engineer and the Director of Development for BET Investments, and we have a brief presentation here with some images, some slides, some information about what we would propose to do should this amendment move forward. This introductory page with a background image here of some renderings of the building. And before I get into too many of the details, I just wanted to talk about this type of project, this age-restricted apartment complex. We have another property locally here in Upper Dublin Township that we developed back in the mid-2000s, which is now fully occupied. It's 192 age-restricted units on property there. It's a very popular property in the area. We have a lengthy waiting list of people waiting to get into that property. In fact, if you came to sign up now, it would take you about a year before you could even get an apartment in that property. We have functions at the property, parties, yoga, events where they get a bus chartered and go to different places, and it's very popular with that demographic. So we have a few things here to show you. Again, project description, then we'll go over a tax revenue impact sheet and some traffic data that we've generated for the possible redevelopment of the property. So the property in question, I'm going to skip ahead here a little bit, is, as Joe mentioned, everybody knows the YMCA, Susquehanna and Old York Road, and then also the Hellwig Funeral Home, which is adjacent to the YMCA along Old York Road. We have frontage on both of those streets. We will take access to both of those streets. Actually, I think I have it on here. Old York Road, the left side of the page, Susquehanna at the top, Sunrise Assisted Living is up here, Abington Hospital, of course, is off the page to the top. So the proposed zoning would rezone the property. It currently exists as a split zoning between community service and R3 to an AO Apartment Office District. In conjunction with that, we would propose some amendments to the AO District to allow this specific use at this location. We, based on the rents that we achieve at our other property, we expect that our rents here would be north of $2,000 a month. We are proposing only one- and two-bedroom units, and of course, with the age restricted, you get no children out of this to impact the school district. So the site plan, back to this, again, Old York Road here. In the blue is the general outline of the superstructure of the building, that would be the residential units. And then you'll see these areas, they're named amenity deck, pool deck, and amenity deck, and these are raised areas above, there's parking beneath the entire structure, so it's all fully enclosed parking. And above that parking is a deck upon which we would locate the pool and other outdoor amenities, garden areas, seating areas, grilling areas, those kinds of things. Driveway on Old York Road, of course, York Road is divided, so this would be a right-in, right-out driveway. It goes underneath the building, proceeds back, we have a fire access lane here, and then, again, underneath the building, this driveway on Susquehanna would be a right-in, left-in, right-out driveway. There would be no left turns at that location. And then another driveway here, further away from the intersection, that would be full access, and that goes directly underneath into that parking deck. So there's lots of areas for greenery on these decks besides the peripheral buffering that's available around the property. So this is an image that our architect has put together based on the footprint of the building. This would be along Susquehanna Road. We're proposing wide sidewalks along Susquehanna Road with landscaping up against the building, entrances at the street level, and then you'll start to notice we have some patios, decks, and setbacks of the building. As you get taller, it sets back from the lower levels to help break up some of the mass of the building. This is a view that we've generated looking from the intersection of Old York Road and Susquehanna through the cemetery that exists on the corner. Again, you can start to see some of these setbacks of the building at the upper levels to create these deck and patio areas that residents can enjoy. Another view along Susquehanna, a little bit further away, this end of the building, this would basically be if we were standing in the front yard of Sunrise looking across. So as you, as the building goes towards the fairway, it gets lower. We have a step down at the top level, another step down at the next level, and then this is that amenity deck that I was discussing earlier. Overneath, this is all the underground parking here, which obviously doesn't look like underground parking. This is the entrance that I talked about. Along York Road, similar treatment, where we step the building back as we transition away at the edges of the property, and this would be the entrance there along Old York Road. This image shows it divided, that is, we would propose to create an emergency access brake there, but not for, not for residents to use to turn in for that direction. So this is an example of what the amenity deck and pool deck might look like. These areas are actually built up above the concrete below with about two feet of soil and plant mixture. It operates both for stormwater purposes and obviously just as a nice amenity to green up the property and make it very enjoyable for people to have parties and whatnot during their daytime hours out on the deck. Another view of the amenity space, and then we start to get into some examples of the interior finishes. This is going to be a very high-end. As I mentioned, the rents are going to be north of $2,000 a month, and the expectation at that point is that you have very high-end finishes, lots of amenity spaces in the building for people to gather, and, you know, they play cards, they have book groups, and those kind of things. Some of the two-story lobby areas that you get in this kind of setup, some of the outdoor amenity spaces, we have fire pits along with the pool, aforementioned, you can see the grill area in the background. We'll also have an interior exercise facility, an exercise room, both for cardiovascular stuff as well as yoga and other exercise programs. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll get into some of the tax benefits of this type of development. As I'm sure you've all heard, age-restricted housing does have the benefit of generating taxes for the township and the school district, and particularly the school district benefits by the fact that these revenues are generated without any impact of students putting into the school district. We had our consultant take a look at this property in particular under the proposed development, as well as look at the township statistics, and has determined that the school district would benefit to the tune of about $725,000 a year. The township itself, about $125,000 a year for a grand total of about $850,000 a year of a tax benefit. Traffic is generally a large concern with any type of development because this is not a new development. The YMCA obviously operates there, and as a result of their use, is fairly intense on the property. And the nature of the age-restricted housing is obviously a much lower traffic generator, and even at the numbers that we're talking about for this property of 225 units, you can still see here, and these are based on actual counts. We went and counted the actual traffic at this YMCA. They're not, they're not theoretical values for the YMCA. These are the actual counts of the driveways. You would see a reduction on a daily basis of 361 trips, and during, and most of those reductions occur in the peak hours, which means that the YMCA is very heavy on the peak hour trips. You have 186 fewer trips in the weekday morning and 168 fewer trips in the weekday afternoons. So that concludes the information that we prepared for you tonight, and then if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to try to address them to the extent that we can.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner speaking.
Yeah, I'm going to have various questions as we move forward, but you mentioned in the amenity, you're discussing the amenity deck, stormwater management. What, could you give us an overview of the stormwater management plan for the entire site, I mean, really, sites?
Yeah, I mean, we obviously have not gone to that level of detail to design the entire, but we have not done that level of engineering on it. The anticipation is that there will be underground storage, whoops, there will be some sort of underground storage in, probably in this area of the building, below the parking garage. below the parking garage, and then also down at this end of the building. The site has kind of two natural divides. From a topographic standpoint, it drains off this way and then off this way. So there's two locations where we'll intend to have underground detention structures within the footprint of the building, and then, and then from a water quality standpoint, those roof decks will be used for water quality purposes.
Okay. That's all I, that's all I have for the engineering perspective for now, but I've...
Commissioner Vehi.
So you're asking for both a map amendment and a text amendment. I note that Riddle Park is in an AO district. Can you explain to me why you can't make this project work with an existing permissible uses of an AO district?
I think, Riddle Park, I think the existing district, the uses that are allowed in the existing district are for life care facilities and that sort of thing. While this is age-restricted, we are not, we are not providing assisted living-type facilities at this project.
Well, let me be more precise. Your presentation actually talks about density, so I assume you need this to increase density on the existing AO district, correct?
Correct.
Why can't you make this work with less density?
There are fiscal reasons. Purchase prices of the YMCA property in terms of, and the density that we're asking for in the ordinance is in keeping with a lot of apartment-type properties of modern design. They're taller, they're, they're more compact, more suburban, semi-urban, infill-type properties.
Okay. I understand we're moving to advance this towards more hearings, but this is an issue I'm very interested in, and just a blanket description of more density doesn't do anything for me, so I'm going to need more information about this before I could, you know, make a final vote.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Sanchez.
This may be a question from Mr. Coles, two questions actually. On the, I understand Commissioner Vehi's question about the zone, the AO zoning, could you talk a little bit about the zoning that's there currently and what that might allow in the, you know, in the current configuration? Obviously, we have a situation here with a unique use in place, the YMCA, and to be clear, now I'm drifting into a comment, not a question, but the YMCA is no more, you know, they'll be leaving, they're selling the property, this isn't, you know, there's not a likely replacement for that. Are there other uses that you investigated that would fit into the current?
Well, part of the analysis you're going to see presented to both the Planning Commission on January 23rd and to your Code Committee on January 31st, and much of the data which will be presented through sworn testimony and expert land planners, expert traffic engineers, and gentlemen who prepare the economic analysis, is precisely the impact upon this property, not only through the use which is existing and which would be allowed to continue, but comparing any number of other permitted uses under the AO district with the proposal. And we're confident that we're going to be able to establish for you that the impact on the community, both from a traffic perspective and a fiscal perspective and an aesthetic perspective and any other, you know, any other considerations that come up, are going to be far favorable under the proposal than compared to what is out there today, continuing, or any of the other permitted uses in the AO district. Now, clearly, there's going to be an increase in density being proposed, but there's also an age restriction component of this that I don't believe is present right now. It's just one example, in the AO apartment office district, which justifies the entire project. I mean, obviously, that David Babbitt analysis that we threw up to just show you as a little snapshot of is strictly based upon the fact that it is an age-restricted community. We're proposing a use here in the apartment office district, the senior apartment housing, which is not even a permitted use currently in the, in the AO district. And we're prepared to go into all those issues with you again, through the Planning Commission, through your Code Committee, and through sworn testimony in a hearing, which we're hopeful may occur two months from now, in March. We certainly understand the considerations, and you've made it very clear, Commissioner, that you need more information on that topic before you're ever in a position to even consider voting favorably upon the project, and we understand that, and we're prepared to present the information. We're only asking you tonight to let us go through that process, to let us begin that process, to please let us stay at, schedule us for January 23 at your Planning Commission, schedule us for January 31 at your Code Committee. Only then will we have an ordinance vetted through those committees that we would then ask you to advertise on February 8 for a hearing on March 8. So all these issues are going to be discussed, and there may be some modifications through that process before we ever get back to you a month from now, asking you to advertise anything.
And that dovetails nicely with my second question, which was as, if we were to invoke what I've been calling the public process, the going to the Planning Commission, the going to the Code Committee, and then on for an advertisement for possibly a future hearing. Before that, you would be willing to sit down with the neighbors and in a forum?
Of course.
We could host a meeting here if need be, or, you know, whatever room was sizable, so that we could hopefully vet and discuss these, all these concerns, and, you know, possibly a forum that's more conducive to question and answer than maybe here this evening.
Absolutely. In addition to the meetings I described, which I pointed out are all public meetings, will all be advertised, the neighbors will all receive notice of those meetings. We will not only make ourselves available all the time, but we'll establish some actual times outside the context of formal township meetings, that we have the experts there, and we have the ability to sit down with the neighbors and listen to their concerns and respond to them, and get them answers in a way that's a little more conducive than a room full of people.
I thank you for that.
Commissioner Clark. What consideration did your design team or your professional team put into looking at the recently adopted comprehensive zoning ordinance that we passed back in April or May of last year?
Our planner isn't here with us this evening, but our planner was charged with drafting an ordinance to effectuate the proposal.
Sorry, who did you say the planner was? I didn't hear someone's name.
The planner was, the planner is John Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, John Kennedy is our planner. He's not here with us this evening because of the nature of this meeting, but obviously he'll be there at the Planning Commission with us, and obviously he'll be there at the Code Committee with us, and the charge to him was to draft a new ordinance consistent with your comprehensive plan. He's reviewed the plan, he's reviewed your ordinance, obviously you have a new ordinance. We've taken all that into consideration when arriving at the changes that we needed in order to effectuate the proposal.
Any other questions? Commissioner Heckler.
Yes, thank you, President Looker. So, I think, just to be clear for us and those who are here listening on TV, so we're introducing a concept tonight about which we all will require additional information to make a determination about whether this is something we want to see proceed, and if that doesn't happen after tonight, then they wouldn't have access to the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing board, where additional information will be generated about this project. So really, all we're, all we're asking, or all they're asking for tonight was to be allowed to move through the township process. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be at all glib about this, but it's almost the equivalent of handing the zoning hearing board application to the person working behind the counter. I mean, the only difference is that you're not obligated to take this application as compared to a zoning hearing board application, as I said. I mean, if I were to show up at the township building on a Wednesday afternoon with a zoning hearing board application, you just take it and process it, because you have to. If you don't act on it, there's a deemed approval in 90 days. What is it, 60 days? Same thing for a land development application. It's only because this is a rezone application and there's no obligation to hear it at all that we're here this evening. I can tell you that I've been doing this for 27 years throughout Montgomery and Bucks County, and there's an awful lot of townships who just have the manager schedule a hearing, because the advertising of the hearing is $200 or $300, it's well within his capacity as a manager to just administratively write a check for that amount and schedule a hearing. And it happens all the time. In fact, the vast majority of the times I've done this, that's the way it happens. This isn't, this is extraordinary. We're here tonight to make a public announcement about the fact that nothing is happening behind the scenes on this. Nothing is happening without the public being fully aware of it. We are essentially tonight handing up an application to this board and saying, please take this. That's all that's happening. And we will then hopefully show up at a Planning Commission, show up at a Code Committee meeting, and then come back before you a month from now, and make no mistake, a month from now we will be asking, for the first time, that you take the ordinance that was a result of those meetings and neighbors' meetings, and please advertise it for us for a hearing on March 8. But that's certainly, we are at the beginning of the beginning of this process this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of commissioners, including Commissioners Vehi and Sanchez and Heckler, sort of presaged some of my questions for you, Mr. Coles, but ultimately, I guess, it's not so much a question, but a comment, like, given the approach, I think, of the current board of Commissioner Sanchez, of myself, because, I mean, while, while this development is located entirely in Ward 7, is right across the street from Ward 11, the ward that I represent, you should, you know, prepare yourself accordingly for very rigorous meetings. I mean, certainly, obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a process of the public meetings, as you said, the Planning Commission, et cetera, but as far as the meetings, the meetings with the neighbors, neighbors who will be the nearby neighbors in Ward 7, and some folks over from the side of the street where, where I live, who are going to, there's a lot of information that's going to be expected. I mean, certainly, I know one thing that I'd like to hear is, this is a universal question for any text amendment, is, you know, a comprehensive understanding of what other areas of Abington Township could be affected if this, if the text amendment goes through. Another question, specific to the text amendment, and this closely relates to the density question that Commissioner Vehi asked, basically, how close, how close would you have been trying to stay within the existing density of the, of the current, the current AO district? And using, you know, using various, you know, give and takes of buffers and other offsets to increase density? How, how close could you have gotten to your desired density without asking for, without asking for the text, that asking for the density provisions in the text amendment? And I think also, I mean, the neighbors, the neighbors that I've spoken to on both sides of the street, and that Commissioner Sanchez has spoken to, I mean, they, you know, they're going to have, they're going to have a boatload of questions, and I think one of the things they're going to want to know is what they're, what they're going to be looking at. I mean, when you live, when you live, this is, this is very different, obviously. This is very different from the Y, it's very different from the Helwig Funeral Home, but particularly, particularly from the Y. People, people are going to want to know what, what day-to-day life is going to be like with this as a neighbor. And it's a lot, it's a lot to ask. As you said, in many townships, this is all, this would be, this would be de rigueur, this would, this would basically be a rubber stamp process, but we are not believers in rubber stamps or done deals at all. So, I mean, I'm throwing out a lot of random questions you wouldn't necessarily be able to answer tonight, but these, you can expect those questions from many different sources, and many, many more, so.
Sure.
Prepare yourself, I mean, prepare yourself accordingly.
Yeah, we do expect those questions, and, and they're all good questions, and certainly, what we're, what's being proposed is very different than what's out there now. The questions aren't much different, however, than the questions that come up in most rezonings. You want to know why it's necessary, you want to know how it's going to impact the community, you want to know exactly what it means, what other, what other properties might be impacted by this, what properties are zoned AO, what properties still remain for potential development, what properties might be converted under the AO, and how will these types of changes in the regulations affect those properties? These are all the questions that always come up, I mean, there's always a few that we don't think of, certainly, but we're going to hear them. We're going to hear them from the neighbors, and we're going to hear, and we're going to hear them from you. And, and certainly, I, you know, I didn't mean to imply that anywhere a rezoning is a rubber stamp, it never is. All I, all I meant to say, and all I tried to say, was that appearing at a meeting like this before the process even starts is quite a commitment to a transparent process, and I know it's important to you, we know, we know it's important to you, and it's, and it's important to us. And we will sit with the neighbors, we will sit with the neighbors in organized meetings, and we will answer calls from the neighbors when they make them, to give them as much information as possible, and we're going to, we're going to be able to calm the concerns of a lot of people, and we're never going to calm the concerns of some people, as you are all well aware. And we're hopeful that we're going to be able to answer all your questions and satisfy your concerns to the extent that you feel it's appropriate, and you're comfortable with implementing the ordinance that we put on the table.
And it, just for the record, it is appreciated. I don't, I mean, I don't want, I don't want that to go unsaid. Your presence is definitely legitimately appreciated. I will throw one more thing on your knock list.
Sure.
Which is, which is sort of a, you know, a nice, clean cheat sheet for all of us commissioners and the neighbors and the township staff and anyone else who wants to see it. Simple synopsis of the differences between AO as it currently exists and AO with the proposed new age-restricted, senior housing use adopted, if that text amendment were to be adopted.
Sure, I can tell you that, you know, one of the things we've done, understanding that that would be something that everybody would be interested in, right from the start, is we didn't do what a lot of planners and attorneys do, which is just hand you something that you have to sit down with the two pieces and try to fit it together. I think we actually have a red line that we submitted to you that shows precisely how things are, how things are being proposed to be changed. So, but we'll go over all those details, you know.
I need it even, I need it even simpler. I need, I need like...
We'll get it, we'll get it as simple.
Crayon drawings.
We'll get it as simple as you need it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark. Yeah. So just to comment on a couple of things. So Commissioner Heckler brought up, we do have a sketch plan process that you could go through before going through any of this, to get some feedback from the Planning Commission, primarily set up for just such an occasion. So there is one, one opportunity to do this before you go into any kind of formal process of the vetting, formal vetting process that a, advertising of the ordinance would require. Being one of the people heavily involved in the zoning rewrite that was, that concluded last year, I, I do have some of the same concerns that have been talked about. I mean, the density in this ordinance that's being proposed is nothing close to what has been contemplated in anywhere in the ordinance. Building heights in properties such as this, impervious coverages, setbacks, I mean, I, you know, I realize that you may have looked at things, I just don't understand where they're, where they're connected in some of the thought process that was put into, you know, the close to seven, eight-year process of rewriting our zoning ordinance. And being one person who put a lot of time into it, I have trouble going on and looking into an ordinance that's going to be such a drastic change to anything contemplated in our current ordinance that we just adopted. So I have, do, do have some deep concerns about the proposal and its lack of continuity with what was discussed and what was vetted over that period of time.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Gillespie.
Yes, this is just a comment, and I really don't know enough about this even, but I do want to say that I do know the Drescher project really well, I pass it all the time. And just to hear that you have a waiting list, I thought was interesting, because as a realtor, I'm always like, oh, isn't it a shame? They don't, they must have a lot of empty apartments there. And here you have underground parking, which, you know, I'm finding out, and you have a waiting list. How many buildings are there, 10, eight, 10?
Twelve.
There's 12, 12 buildings.
Okay, it's just interesting, you know, that, talking about density, and I, I don't think I see a car come out of there just about every time I ride by. They're there, they're there.
Most of the residents use the underground parking, and very few of them use this, the surface parking. It does, it does look empty, but I assure you it's not.
It does, I know, and that's what I'm saying, like, when you're talking density, I'm thinking, you probably won't even know these people are here, because I pass that so often, and that was my thought. I thought these, these buildings aren't occupied, and here they are.
Yeah, they're occupied. My mother's in one of them, to be, to be near her grandchildren. I live in Upper Dublin, not far away, and I can tell you, it's just changed the quality of her life. She was living on a five-acre parcel in Chester County, and she is active, in an active community, and she has friends that she didn't have before, and when she needs to go somewhere, I typically wind up picking her up.
Okay, Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to short-circuit anything, certainly, and I know there's a number of residents I see and recognize, and I'm sure they want to comment. I feel the same way with a lot of questions, all the questions articulated by various people this evening. I would be inclined to invoke the process, though, so that we can vet this out, hear from the planner. I realize some of the questions are more appropriate for the planner, probably there's more graphics, I'm sure, with the design team that would be coming, and to also neighborhood meetings, because to give you insight from what I'm thinking, I just, I see this as something people, you know, it's big, and people are going to have an immediate reaction to. What I don't know are any alternatives. I realize you're bringing something to us that you're presenting as, you know... I realize you're bringing something to us that you're presenting as, you know, your best alternative. What I'm concerned with is what's allowed under existing zoning, and what are other things that may go there, because I, for one, would, if I had to choose between a Wawa and something like this, I would prefer to go with something like this, you know, sight unseen. But, so, that's what, I would like a deeper understanding and to understand that kinda stuff throughout the process, which I assume the planner would, that testimony, and the testimony of engineers and stuff.
Absolutely, we understand that a large part of this process is showing you alternatives, and showing you what can be developed out there by right today, and what will be permitted under the ordinances, if the map were to remain unchanged. We're very clear about that.
And I didn't mean to pick on Wawa, but other retail uses or anything conceivable that might go in that.
Yeah, we're just asking this evening that you take the application as submitted as a starting point.
Yep, I understand. Thank you for that.
Rather than change the application before we even submit it to you.
And Manager Manfredi, I believe, has a point, but I did wanna, by matter of parliamentary procedure, should I motion that to continue, and then we take comment from others, or is that?
I think once the commissioners have finished asking whatever questions you have, and before you go into public comment, I think at the end of that, I don't know necessarily, it sounds to me like you're going to be voting this, it sounds to me like it's more giving me direction and consent to allow township administration staff to spend time in doing analysis, and assisting the planning commission, and whatever needs to be done to move it forward, so you have information. So, basically, it would be consent to direct me to allow that to move forward. I don't know that you need to vote if you're not going to be voting to advertise, or taking any formal vote to move it forward.
That's correct, I don't think any vote is strictly necessary, the board can indicate its consent to the manager to move forward, and if there's any objection, obviously, that could be voiced as well.
There is, there is a motion on the floor, it hasn't been seconded, but there is a motion on the floor.
I actually didn't move it.
Yeah, it wasn't actually moved or seconded.
Yeah. We're comfortable with the consensus, we're comfortable with the consensus to move forward, and to schedule us on the planning commission, and to authorize staff to assist us in presenting what we need to present. We have executed a professional services agreement with the township, and we funded an escrow, so there won't be any expense to the township in that process, and, you know, we're comfortable knowing that there's a majority of this board that's comfortable with us moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Zepone?
Yeah, I have a comment to make. Many of you know me, I'm very outspoken, but I like to get things, you know, out in the open of my chest. But I'm sitting here listening to all this, and it's like, here comes another developer, it's what they want, they want, okay? I'm just at a point where developers come into our house, our house, we're all taxpayers, we all live in Abington here, okay? And they want us to change the laws that have been on our books for years and years and years, just to benefit them. I have a major problem with that. The zoning rewrite, the zoning rewrite took a long time, it was a lot of hard work to finalize. So, that package was voted on, we approved it, now here they come, in the door, well, we don't want that, we don't like that, let's change, let's make it our way, because it's gonna benefit us. No, why don't you benefit the residents of this township?
Thank you. I'm a little sick and tired. Commissioner Roth.
I'd like to say, there's certainly parts of what Commissioners Zepone just indicated that I agree with wholeheartedly. However, I'd be very hesitant for our board to ever, and there's going to be exceptions, so I may regret saying that, but not to gather more information. To me, it's the same thing as when we were voting on whether we were going to send out the RFI for township engineer. That was something where I didn't think it would, I thought it would turn out the way it did, where we got information and said it will save taxpayer money to consider staying the way we have it. But particularly with my experience working as an attorney, for us to block hearing more information, or allowing this to go through the process, is, to me, a little bit of a dangerous precedent. Now, some people here may have already decided that, you know what, this is, you know, way outside the boundaries of the zoning ordinance, and may have even made up their minds. But I think that, as a board, we need to allow this type of process to move forward, gather more information, have residents have the opportunity to speak with developers, to speak with us, and particularly with the commissioners in the wards where it's affected, and then move forward in the process. And by no means is that saying okay to the folks that are applying for the ordinance that I'm behind it. I need to have questions answered, I need to speak with my residents further, and it's by no means a comment to any of the residents here tonight that don't want this to move forward, that I'm not on your side, or will be. But our job here, at least the way I see it, is to get information as much as we can, ask and get answers to questions, and then make a decision on it that is best for our residents in our ward and the township as a whole. So, that would be why I'm in favor of this moving forward, and it doesn't, for me or anybody else, bind us to any future decision or vote, or how this might impact other parts of Abington and the zoning, the rewrite that was just done. So, that's my take on it, and I would ask that we all consider those thoughts and sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Rothman, I would very much like to see more, I'd like to learn more. I would certainly like to learn more about this, the density aspect of this, how it compares with some other developments, particularly one that just was completed, Lionsgate, the Penn State project. I'd like to see those comparisons. And for another reason that I would like to hear more, is that I truly believe in Abington Township, there is a real lack of senior apartments, 55 and over apartments. And I'm not saying an independent or assisted living facilities, I mean totally apartment, totally independent. I think, I would really like to learn more, as being over 55 and over.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight and presenting this. As we move forward, I just, I'm looking for some assurance from you guys, that you're actually willing to work with the residents, and the board, and the planning commission moving through this process. Commissioner Vehi kind of questioned you on the density issue earlier on, questioned why the density of the development project is what it is, and I believe the response was for fiscal reasons. And I just wanna make sure that fiscal reasons aren't gonna hold up compromises with residents and with the township. Can you assure us that you will be willing to work with us as we move forward?
Certainly, we can certainly assure you that we're willing to work with the commissioners and the residents and the community, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for commissioners? Commissioner Bowman?
The place in Upper Dublin, is that apartments still, or is that condos?
Apartments also.
It certainly looks a lot different from this, you'd grant me that, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's far more bucolic than this.
I don't know that I'd use the word bucolic, but it is different.
There's green space between the buildings, correct?
Is there?
There's landscaped green space between all the buildings up there.
It is a different product, yes. I can tell you that it was originally conceived as condos, and it was ultimately built as apartment rentals.
And while I sympathize with my commissioners that want more information, I mean, this is pretty detailed, it's right in front of you, it's a monstrosity, on both fronts, Susco Hannah and 611. I mean, almost every piece of that footprint is building, giant building. So, I share Commissioner Klein's concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Schreiber.
So, I've been, I wasn't going to say anything, I've been listening to all of my colleagues, and agree with things on both sides. The density is a concern. I'm wondering, what is the process, because I do appreciate that you came forward, and you're sort of at the very beginning, and you're asking permission to go on, and I do appreciate that. But if we say no tonight, what is the process? If there was enough people, the commissioners, but we wanna, can they go and make some changes, and then come back a month later?
You could, it is your prerogative, because of it being a zoning request, amendment request, to simply say, we're not interested, and that's it. That's one option. The second option is to consent to allowing it to go through a process that, as we described before. Another option is to take the request that they gave for the ordinance, advertise it, let that be the basis for all public discussion, or you could do any permutation of that.
Wouldn't you agree?
Absolutely, this is, this falls purely under the board's legislative powers, and therefore, Mr. Coles has made the application, the township does not have to move it forward. It can move forward to, and move through the process, and then when it comes time for advertising, the board can choose to advertise it or not. As Mr. Manfredi said, you can, the board can authorize advertising in its current form, and use that as the benchmark, and if there's changes made along the way, it would obviously need to be re-advertised, should the board wish to consider it. But at the, when push comes to shove, if the board is not interested in hearing this at all, the board can certainly decline to move this forward tonight.
And if you, at any point, obviously, even if you advertise an ordinance, go through a process, go through a public vetting, authorize the advertisement, or have the public hearing, you can still reject the ordinance and say no.
Because I have a lot of the same concerns, I think, as other people with the density, and the way it looks, and it, I would like to have more green space and all of that. But I also understand what Commissioner Myers said, we need 55-plus apartments in this area, and don't really have them. So, the concept, I think, is a good one, for someplace in the township, maybe not that spot, I'm not really even sure about that. It does look huge in that area, and the density is way off what our rewrite has said, so I'm not sure if we're maybe going to the wrong first step, and perhaps meeting with some of the public first is a better way to do that.
Let me just say, let me just say three things, because I think it goes to the points that everybody's raising, and certainly the way I'm viewing this. And I've sat on both sides of this table, I've been municipal solicitor in a number of municipalities throughout Montgomery County, and I've certainly represented a lot of developers over the years. We're doing three things here. We're asking, we're asking for an opportunity to be heard, that's all we're asking for, this is an opportunity to be heard. We're asking for an opportunity to be heard in a forum that you have set up, that evaluates credible, that weighs the credibility of evidence, and that comes to a final conclusion. We're only asking for an opportunity to participate in that process, that's all we're asking for. Secondly, to the, to the comment about having just written your ordinance, I understand that, I understand there's energy related to that, I understand that a lot of time and energy went into that. Zoning ordinances are living documents, and they change all the time. And the drafters of the Constitution spent a lot of time on that document, and within a year or two, realized they missed a couple of things, and made some changes. And that's all we're asking for, is an opportunity to create that process where you might come to the conclusion that there were a couple of things that you might change. And that brings me to my third point, which is that this matter remains discretionary throughout. There isn't some sort of magic point that you're gonna pass this evening where then your hands are tied. This question that we're putting before you remains a strictly legislative decision to the very end. It's like asking your congressman to please lower your taxes. He doesn't even have to listen to you, he can throw your letter in the trash if he wants to. Or he could entertain it, and take you right up to the end of the hour and say, ah, no, decided against it. We're willing to spend the time, and the effort, and the money, to hold your hands through that process, and to walk through the forest with you together, to see at the end whether you come to the conclusion that what we're asking for just isn't in our interests, but it's in the interest of the community. That's gonna be the decision we're asking you to make, and that's gonna be the decision that you're called upon to make, you know that. If your conclusion at the end of that process is that we're only asking for this to line our own pockets, well, your answer's gonna be no, obviously. If your answer at the conclusion of that process is that what we're proposing is, in fact, in the best interest of this community, well, then you're gonna vote yes. We're confident enough, right now, that the final conclusion is gonna yield a yes from you, that we're willing to spend the time and the energy and the money to participate in that process. We're only asking you for shy. We're only asking you to give us an opportunity to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President, for me. Mr. Coles, I think, comparing the new zoning ordinance to the constitution is gonna go to Commissioner Klein's head. I don't think I can, I don't think I can live with that. Speaking to the excellent points made by Commissioners Rothman and Thompson, we, you know, we live in the, we live in the real world, your answer was honest, it's a, it's for fiscal, the density is for fiscal reasons, this is a, it was a for-profit developer, and it's a business, you need to make money.
Well, there's certain things that are necessary to make the project happen at all.
Right, understood. You pay it a certain amount, that's, that's the real world. Along the same lines, you know, there are municipalities near us, one in particular, that's basically the land of no development. All, you know, development is turned down at every, you know, at every possible turn, and their property taxes are quite literally double ours. Again, we live, we live in the real world. But, and again, this speaks very directly to Commissioner Thompson's point. One thing, and I, and what I'm, I'm telling you, again, what to prepare for, and I know I'm not the only one who feels this way, responsible development, for me anyway, starts from the perspective, the street-level perspective of the neighbor and the neighborhood. Folks, there are folks here who have heard me say this before, and will hear me say this again. It's, you know, developers have, developers own property, they have rights, you have the right to come here and petition us, and we have responsibilities to sort of see things through proper channels. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, as it happens, none of us have to, would have to live next door to this development, but there are people in this room who would. As I said, for me, it starts from the vantage point of the neighbor and the neighborhood. So, you're, I'm glad, I'm pleased by your response to Commissioner Thompson's question about willingness to compromise. But I, you know, again, prepare, prepare yourself for that to come up, because ultimately, it is the neighbors, the residents, and not commercial property owners or developers who send us here, and whom we represent first and foremost, so, just again, prepare yourself accordingly.
I understand.
Thank you.
I'm prepared.
Preparation is important.
Okay, any other comments or questions, Commissioner Thompson?
Just two more things. Going to what Commissioner Spiegelman said, I appreciate his comments about the development reflecting the character of the neighborhood. And when I look at this rendering, I have a really tough time seeing this as being an Abington development. This could be something in Center City, could be in Northern Liberties, so that's one of the things I'm struggling with, and that's one of the things that we will be talking about if this process moves forward. Also, this conversation is very focused on this particular process, or this project, my bad. But you're looking for a text amendment to the zoning code, and the zoning code applies to a lot more locations than just your site. So, if you're looking for us to amend the AO, that applies to a lot of areas across the township, and I'm gonna be asking you, moving forward, if we go forward, what the impacts are to all of those areas, not just your site.
And we're gonna have the answers for you. I mean, it is not an unforeseen question. I mean, clearly, we drafted the ordinance with some parameters related to distances from hospitals, distances from transportations. We'll be able to tell you, as we move through this process, and we have the hearings, precisely which properties might be able to implement the provisions which might be there tomorrow that aren't there today. It's not an unforeseen question, and we're gonna have full answers for you in the context of the upcoming public discussion on this, on this project.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from commissioners? If there are none, counsel, I think it would be appropriate if we opened up a public comment at this time?
I would agree with that.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll open it up for comments or questions from the public. Please adhere to our three-minute speaking rule, first by coming up to the podium stating your name and address for the record. And if you would, if those who want to speak, not repeat what the previous speaker said, that would be greatly appreciated, so we can streamline the amount of time that we have for questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service.
Name and address, please.
My name is David Zuplansky, I live at 2967 Lincoln Ave, Art's Lee, PA 19038. This is a very disturbing proposal. I've been an artist, I've been an educator, and I'll try to keep this to three minutes. I would kindly ask you not to act on this zoning amendment. Do not let the developers rezone the township in their own interest, this will take away the residents. Well, right now, there aren't enough residents here, and I don't think they've been notified that this meetings would go forward. that this meetings would go forward with a rezoning request, a rezoning amendment where there are already, there's already a zoning ordinance in. I'm an educator, I've taken classes myself at the Y and I'll go forward with why I'm saying this. There are always senior citizens, adults and children attending programs at the Abington YMCA and a place for young people and handicapped citizens to work. There is such a diversity of courses and diversity of people at the Y that is a pity that such progress will not continue. I would humbly suggest that instead of these high-rise monstrosities, and I respect what Commissioner Zampone and Commissioner Bowman had the courage to say and Commissioner Klein, Thompson and some of the others, I would humbly suggest that you put it a community center in the current Y building, such as they have in Artsley, where many different programs can take place. If the YMCA property is rezoned to build high-rise facilities, it will affect the traffic density. I know, I have degrees in several areas and statistics can be skewed in various ways and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but when you're selling something, you put your best foot forward. And this is going to affect the aesthetics of Susquehanna Road and also Old York Road. There's nothing like it on there. And you drive down, all of a sudden, the Tower of Babel is up there. Please, don't do this. There's already a zoning code. The zoning codes were put in with the idea to keep the quality of life, a suburban atmosphere in the township. In the almost quarter of a century I've been here, Abington has changed to resemble more of a city than a township. And the august body of Commissioners is not obligated to act on this rezoning amendment. I hope with the quality of life of residents in mind, you'll refuse to accept an amendment for rezoning property now or any further meetings, I would squash it now. Don't let it get started. When something is, yes, I respect what was said earlier by the Commissioner Rothman, but that is not, I have, I have to disagree. It is not the Commissioner's job to entertain everything that is brought up on this podium. It is to represent the residents and the quality of life. And this is a tipping point. When you put in something so large, it's larger than anything I've seen on the, on the distance of Old York Road or Susquehanna. It is just going to be the tipping point for the aesthetics in, in this township. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Name and address for the record, please, and three-minute speaking.
Mr. President, Rudolph de Massa.
Thank you. What is your first name, sir?
Rudolph.
Rudolph.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the Board, I, I'm not a neighbor in this area. I live on the other side of Valley Road, close to Holy Redeemer Hospital. Now, I'm trying to get my, my head wrapped around this whole text amendment to the zoning code. And as I've come to understand, the code was revamped in large part due to the efforts of Commissioner Klein and it was done for many reasons.
A lot of people.
A lot of people, but you, I understand that you were, you were there and you did a lot of work on it. It was just revamped last year. Now, as I understand it, and I'm making some assumptions, the request for this amendment would roughly double the current allowable density of AO-zoned properties in the township. One consideration that I would urge the Board to take into account is that such a zoning change will impact, as I believe Commissioner Thompson pointed out, not only this site, but most, if not all, other sites within 2,000 feet of a hospital within this township. I'm concerned about what uses would be allowable on the ground floor if there's retail that's proposed. And the height of this building is pretty imposing. There are neighbors in beautiful homes behind that proposed development and they're going to be in the dark. If my assumptions are correct, I believe that citizens who are residential neighbors at this site, as well as some unwitting neighbors who are residential citizens located within 2,000 feet of any hospital, I'm not sure how we were defining hospital here, within this township, will be impacted. And that's a good number of voters who will be potentially displeased with the specter of a multifamily, four, five or six-story housing development with retail potentially literally in their backyards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I have his address, please? What was the address for the, for your address, sir?
Can we repeat your address, sir?
I'm sorry, 717 Morden Road. That's in Meadowbrook.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Hi, my name is Herb McMahon. I'm from 1046 Huntington Road. I live just behind, or just south of the funeral home, right behind Abington Pediatrics, the Penn, 10 Penns Building. The thing I'd like to say is no zoning changes should come, ever be approved without the knowledge, participation and agreement of a majority of residents. And I think we have totally missed the boat. The first I've heard of this meeting was on Tuesday when I got an email from Ben Sanchez. So, I've had two days' notice. I think there would probably be even more people here if they didn't have to juggle childcare and work schedules and whatever else. But I, I just get the sense that there's this air of transparency that's been talked about. Why has it just come out on Tuesday? And when I got the email, it was characterized as unimportant, that it's a foregone conclusion and it really is not that important to attend unless you want to get a firsthand glimpse of what's happening. And I think if you want to characterize it as unimportant, try telling BET or Mr. Culler that it's unimportant. And I'm a citizen--
I have to disagree with you there, Mr. McMahon. I did not categorize it as unimportant. In fact, I encouraged people to come if they could. I had got notice of it Friday, being on the agenda, got it out as fast as I could in my own personal life to people and I didn't want people to feel obligated to come, especially in case they didn't have the opportunity to comment. I was just trying to save people time and elaborate that no action was going to be taken, no final action was going to be taken tonight. You would have plenty of time to comment along the way. So, I would just like to clarify that.
Okay. There was no attachments or no detail? The first detail I heard of this was Mr. Spiegelman's email from 557--
I take issue with that, too. I had an attachment and a link to information on the project.
For all the stuff that John had, I didn't see the attachment. So, I got the, just to make a long story short, even if there was that information two days ago, I don't think that's adequate preparation. Okay? I can't get through that much material and digest it. And so, I got this information at 557 is when the email was put out. So, I think I got it around 6:30. Between 6:30 and 7:00, I was speed reading through. I just think there's a rush to get this done and I, I just feel as though my rights as a citizen are being railroaded. Okay? I'm living behind this. This is a monstrosity. I can't imagine anything more dense. I can't imagine anything more imposing on the community. It's a beautiful community. I can't imagine anything worse. You're talking about 428 cars, 225 units, and then there's surface parking, too. So, the 428 could easily be 450 cars. And I, I just can't even imagine. I've been to the YMCA and it's difficult to get in and out. I just can't even imagine what that area will look like. And to Mr. Thompson's point, I could see that in Northern Liberties or I could see that in Center City. I don't think that that's what we want in this township. So, for the right, for the, for the simple reason that I feel like my rights are being railroaded by such a quick motion here, I would like to say that I would recommend to the Commissioners that the vote be no. I can see no reason why this was all, I was reading Mr. Culler's letter that was dated November 22nd. So, I don't understand why you just found out about it on Friday and I found out about it on Tuesday and we're meeting here on Thursday. I, I just feel as though there should be time for more citizen input. I can guarantee you that there are citizens that are in the area within 2,000 feet of the hospital who have not been notified except for maybe at 557 this evening and there was an invitation to attend. I don't think there's anybody between the hours of like 6:00 PM and 7:30 that's going to be making this meeting. And I think when you talk about the text amendment, I have the concern of where else is it going to be applied in this township? I think that the Commissioners have raised many great issues. I, I just, this, this to me is a heartache and I feel as though if we allow the ship to leave the port, it's already assailing. And I think that this is the time to stop it, vote no, and see what else we can come up with because this certainly isn't the proper use for this location. I can see that there's a place where this might be appropriate, you know, Center City, Northern Liberties, someplace where there's a lot more land. I'm going to wrap up. But I don't think it's at the corner of Susquehanna and 611. I just don't see it in this neighborhood. I think it's going to be an eyesore and I would please recommend that the Commissioners vote no on this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments from residents?
Mr. President, can I just address one thing because I know Herb very well, just for the record. The reason that my email went out so late was actually due to an internet problem that I was not aware of. So, just for the record, that's why it was so last minute.
That sounded like an excuse. And I know there's internet problems--
Excuse me. So, you and Commissioner Spiegelman can discuss this after the meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Rothman, you have a question?
I just know that people miss the opportunity to--
Just for point of order, thank you.
Express their opinion.
Commissioner Rothman.
I just wanted to respond to a comment that was made a little earlier. In case it was understood by anybody here that I don't feel that acting on behalf of the residents is the most important job of the Commissioners, that is absolutely the number-one aspect and most important aspect of anybody sitting up here. And anyone that would want to dispute that with me, I'd be willing to sit down with that, any Commissioner, but I, I do think we agree on that point. What I'm saying is, as part of the process of getting the answers to the questions that almost every Commissioner has set forth today, we need to have the opportunity to speak further with a developer. We need developers to answer our questions. If the developers come back with questions that you, the residents, who I applaud every single one of you that's here, whether you've spoken or not, to show your interest in our community is admirable. But if we don't get that information, we don't know what could happen next. We don't know the impact of what this potential zoning amendment has on other properties in the township. What I'm saying is, and it may very well be, the last speaker said, you know, that he views this as monstrosity as some others did. It may very well be that every one of us here agreed with that. It may be that we don't. But, number one, in order to potentially find someone to utilize the space, once the YMCA is gone, which will be happening, we need to learn more about what developers are considering because most of the time, anything that's going to be done there is a developer doing something and money doesn't fall out of the sky. And we need to go through a process. If we were to tell everybody that comes to us with a potential zoning amendment presentation to pound stand that we don't like it because some residents don't like it, we wouldn't get anywhere in the process. I admire every single one of you. I share your concerns and I think we need to get some answers to those. It happens, we've had some recent proposed amendments come before us where the process is ongoing and there are changes that have been made, there's concessions that have been made. It may go nowhere, it may be developed. None of us today can promise you what's going to be in front of you on Susquehanna, on the corner of Susquehanna and Old York, at any point in the future. But what I'm saying and what I'm encouraging the other Commissioners to do in letting the process go forward is partially to give you, the residents, the opportunity to speak directly to the people who know more information than those who just came today as part of what is really a formality. We could say no to them and it may be that we say no when we, when we decide in a few moments. But from my perspective, and I just wanted to clarify because I believe that everybody that spoke made very good points and I appreciate them, I'm not telling you that your voice is not being heard by me. I'm telling you that I believe we have to get some more information. And that's what I think is our job as the people behind the scenes that are gathering this information for you. Now, we can't share every piece of information with you if we don't have it yet. I would love it if you had all the information, but we have questions, as you saw. Commissioner Thompson, you know, and Commissioner Vehi started out right away with some questions. We don't have that information to share with you and once we get that, that's why Commissioner Spiegelman asked for dumbing it down for us so that we can answer very easy questions from the public accurately. That's what we want to do, that's what I want to do. So, I applaud all of you for coming tonight and I do really appreciate your thoughts, but I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not saying I'm in favor of the project by wanting this to move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Rothman, wind it up. Thank you, sir. I'd like to get any more comments from residents, this young lady and then Peter Suray?
Yes.
How are you, sir? Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Heller Sliam. My property address is 1047 Huntington Road. So, I live directly behind this proposed building. I don't need to repeat, I think, what's already been said. I do want to acknowledge that I believe in good faith that you, as Commissioners, are working on our behalf. I understand the position that you are in because you also have a, have a bigger picture to look at, which is to make this a sustainable, financially beneficial environment for all of us. And I am appreciative of your desire to keep an open mind. I think that's, I think that's always a good way of keeping things, discussions open. In this particular instance, we are looking at an increase in density and from our perspective, there is no reason for that to be necessary if there are already ordinance that restricts that for our interest. So, I appreciate what you're already doing, Commissioner Klein, with making sure that those interests are in line with our residents. And I, like I said, appreciate that you are working in all of our behabings and I would ask that you vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Suray? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Peter Suray, 1267 Bacias Avenue, Abington. I'm asking if there are any objective criteria for how many over 55 apartments are needed in a township the size of Abington? Two Commissioners, I noticed, reference that. I guess that would be a consideration, but are, is there any objective criteria about how many are needed?
I don't know if anyone here can answer that. You want to give a shot?
I think Ms. Myers, you, you brought it up, that there's a need, what, how, how do you establish that?
Can you name in Abington Township any 55 and over apartments, apartment complexes?
I, I, I wouldn't know.
They're condo.
But what, what, on what basis do you say that there's a shortage or not enough?
In my own personal quest.
Okay. I got you. All right. That's good. Good enough.
I think, I think the conversation, no, you asked.
I did. There's no objective criteria, am I correct?
Excuse me, but can we move forward?
I think the conversation needs to be moved forward. That's all, just the conversation. There's been many times mentioned tonight by the applicant, by the Commissioners, that there will be resident meetings. Those are important meetings to have.
Yeah. But I don't think we're going to answer your question. But go ahead, do you have any, anything else?
Well, another one, I think that the loss of the Y is a huge loss for the community.
But I don't think we're going to answer your question. But go ahead, do you have any, anything else?
Well, another one, I think that the loss of the Y is a huge loss for the community. And this gentleman suggested some sort of community center where those activities could be duplicated. As you know, Mr. Hooper, I was a coach, there is always a shortage of space for the ultimate game of soccer, but other games as well. The absence of the Y, because they do have those fields, I noticed they also use the new fields at the, I guess that's Penn State now. I think it's going to be a real loss to the community and if that's a possibility, I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Suray?
Mr. President, I feel that, I think there's a misunderstanding here. The YMCA is leaving Abington Township and it's moving to a much bigger facility in Willa Grove.
I'm aware of that.
The section, there are sections of Abington Township that will be closer, this new YMCA will be closer to them.
Okay, sir. Name and address, please. Thank you, Mr. Suray.
My name is Christopher Germain. I live at 1092 Huntington Road, which is at the eastern boundary of the YMCA property. It's at the corner of Susquehanna and Huntington Roads. And I thank you all for coming, for your input, for your work here for the township of Abington, but I would respectfully ask the board to deny the request of the developer because I just want to, I guess, restate the obvious that, in my opinion, from what I see, from what my neighbors have said, this proposal does not pass the, any type of reasonable test of what the community really wants or needs. They may need some of the things that are brought up tonight, but this proposal specifically would redefine what the town of Abington is. I know how much time you've put into developing the township and the corner at the intersection of 611 and Susquehanna. This is at the very center of the town and it will redefine what the town is, how the town looks, and everything all around it. Think about the historic Abington Presbyterian Church. This project will dwarf Abington Presbyterian Church. It will dwarf my property, it will dwarf my neighbors' properties, and for this reason I ask for you to reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. You have heard tonight many of the people who just happened to find out at the last minute about this. We have not spoken to anybody who's in favor of it. The letter that's included in the link that we found is, was sent November 22nd to your township manager. It's absolutely difficult for me to believe that Mr. Sanchez...
Was a hearing scheduled at that time?
I'm sorry?
Was a hearing scheduled at that time?
It's difficult for me to believe...
It's difficult for me to listen to you tell lies.
This is my speaking time, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
It's difficult for me to believe that Mr. Sanchez didn't get that information and didn't let his people know that that was happening and enlist from the people in his community their thoughts about it so that, number one, they could even come to this meeting, as you heard Mr. McMahon said, and be prepared. And number two, so that their questions could have been answered somewhat in advance and they wouldn't have to use their precious speaking time. While we're talking about that, this process that you're being asked to go forward with is positively, Mr. Rothman, not how, the best way to get information. At a planning commission meeting, often the developer gets to present for the entire time with planners, going back and forth perhaps with them, and the residents, whose concerns are so important, and you've agreed that they're important. I hope you all agree that they're important, often are left. At one time, I was at a planning commission meeting where they didn't get asked to speak until 1 o'clock. They'd all gone home, they were in bed, and the few of us that were left tried to hold up the fort. There is, or hold down the fort. There is no reason that any developer asking for a zoning change should not be asked to give a full presentation, to find out how many units there are in the township and what this need is. It should be presented here while you have leverage. Right now, you have leverage. They cannot go forward unless you let them. When you do let them without any of that information being handed to you by the developer, not at the expense of township personnel, when you do go forward, then all these people in this room have their property rights being challenged. If they're not there at the planning commission meeting, the planners think they don't care. If they're not there at the committee meeting, the committee members think they don't care. That doesn't mean they don't care, they just have very busy lives and when you say go ahead, their property rights are being challenged. They do not get any financial profit from that. The builder gets so much that he doesn't care how many meetings there are. So this is not the right way to do it. The right way to do it is while you have the leverage, please use that leverage for the benefit of the people that you're serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any further comments from residents?
Hi, my name is Bethany Lippa. I'm at 1056 Huntington Road and the proposed property would border my lot on two sides. And I had concerns particularly about the noise and also the traffic. When they explained the traffic flow, it sounded as if the, there would be no left-hand turn from Susquehanna going towards 611, which means anyone exiting the property on that side would be turning right and likely cutting through Huntington Road. And that's a big issue currently, but I foresee that increasing. My biggest concern would be the loss of the, having the resources of the community center at the YMCA. So I guess if we're all naive and thinking that could be a possibility, we just would like to know that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dee Adcock, 1714 Brook Road, which is just down Susquehanna from the project. Really, you as a Board of Commissioners and representing us have like two things about this that are probably problematic, unless you want it to be, I mean, it's the township of Abington. If you want to make it the city of Abington, then this is a fine first step or maybe a second or third step. I really don't know what is in your heads or what you desire. I moved into the township of Abington and probably prefer to keep it that way. Secondarily, or actually primarily, when something is so out of line with zoning that was done not 20 years or 30 years ago, but 20 months ago or 10 months ago, and isn't even close, it's almost, it's almost insulting, quite honestly, to the people who were involved in producing that zoning and the time that went involved into doing it. And then there's like one more problem on top of that, is that as soon as you yield on something like this to this degree, and I'm the next developer that comes in here and I say, oh, well, you just passed this thing and it was at least twice or three times what was allowed, I only want to be at one and a half or two times. How can you possibly not do it to me? And you've just provided a precedent for me to sue you, I suppose. So those are the three things that I kind of had on my mind from just being here for a little bit. Do you want Abington to be a township or a city? If you want it to be a city, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, counsel, you said we do not have to vote. However, in order to define what's the next step, how do we proceed?
If the board is more comfortable taking a vote to give the manager direction to move the matter forward, I think the board was very clear that directed the applicant, if it does move forward, it's not only going to go to planning, but there, the board is expecting there to be community meetings, so the applicant has that direction. I don't think a formal vote is necessary, but if the board feels uncomfortable, that's perfectly fine. Again, the board's not taking any formal action tonight other than to allow the process to move forward. If that process does move forward, it would require this coming back to the board to authorize advertising. And if that was a successful request, then it would have to come back at least a third time for a formal hearing. Once authorization to advertise goes through, only at that, at that time, the notice requirements and the advertising requirements of the municipality's planning code would kick in and formal notifications would be sent out to all the neighbors. That being said, Mr. Coles was obviously instructed tonight that meetings with the residents in the area would be something the board was expecting to see as part of the presentation come February.
Before we take any further action, I think, Mr. Coles, why don't you close up the presentation?
I just want to restate that we understand that and we're asking you for a consensus. I don't know how you establish a consensus frankly without voting. So we do need to hear from you, we do need to hear from this board as to whether a majority of this board is amenable to the notion that we move forward with this process. So we are asking you to do that. I will state for you that I'm asking you to do that subject to the condition that we'll have neighbors' meetings. We'll make sure that individuals who reach out to us have contact numbers to call us even outside of established neighbors' meetings. And we're certainly, we've stated a number of times, the plan is to appear at your public planning commission meeting on the 23rd and to appear at your public code committee meeting on the 31st. And then to come back to you again on February 8th with the product of those discussions, with the product of the discussions with the neighbors and understanding that you're going to need very fleshy answers to all the issues that came up this evening, including density. And we're going to ask you on February 8th to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance, which is the product of all that vetting. But as for this evening, we are asking you please to let us know that there's a majority of this board that is granting us a consensus to move forward with that process. I don't know how you do that outside of vote.
And if there, if the board is inclined to take a vote, I would recommend that the motion be to direct the manager to forward both the zoning text amendment and the zoning map change amendment to the planning commission and to circulate amongst township staff with the township solicitor.
Commissioner Sanchez, as the commissioner of the ward, put his question, sir.
I mean, I know this is going to be unpopular, but so that we're not in the murky netherland of an outright no with not all the facts before us and what we've heard, just a reaction to the limited information and presentation, I would rather, as I said from the start, invoke the public process so that we can have public meetings. Now everyone in this room knows that the planning commission is on February 23rd. You were asking, Ms. Layman, for, on one hand, why didn't we have any public meetings? Well, we have to start the process somewhere.
They are not the place for residents.
Ms. Layman?
That's inaccurate.
Ms. Layman, please.
It's inaccurate. To be able to speak, we, the comment was taken this evening.
Ms. Layman, if you don't stop talking, I will request that you be removed from the proceedings here. Thank you.
I'll remove myself, just looking down.
Keep it up and you will be gone.
I would like to invoke the public process for rational discussion, public input, neighborhood meetings, and if it ultimately comes down as the applicants indicated that there is not a consensus or they decide to not press the issue, or we decide we don't like it, then we don't like it at that time. But cutting it off without knowing what alternatives are and what other solutions are is not what I see as in the best interest of the township or the community. Therefore, I make the motion as the solicitor indicated to send to the planning commission.
Is there a second? Please, is there a second? I'm sorry.
I was going to actually ask a question, but we have to have a second first, so I'll second it so I can ask a question.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to honor what the commissioner for the ward is requesting here. My only question is, can we change the order of things and have the public meetings before the planning meeting? If that's a possibility, so that people in the area can express their opinion before you even get to that planning stage.
We'll, we'll set up a meeting before, what is today, the 11th? And we're talking about a planning commission meeting on the 23rd, so that gives us 12 days. We'll set, we'll announce some meeting with the neighbors prior to the 23rd.
This is going to put me in a position where it's a rush and then I'm going to be accused of announcing it at the 11th hour, so let me ask...
We're not going to have a meeting before the 23rd.
Or push the planning back.
How about the, how about the February Planning Commission so that there's time to have the public meetings before that and the, before the cycle?
Well, with all, with all due respect, we have a lot of time here between now and March 8th. And if we push back the planning commission, there's other triggers throughout this process.
February's fine.
Pardon? Okay.
February Planning Commission will be fine.
Okay. So strike what I said earlier about the next meeting being the 23rd of the planning commission. Mr. Manfredi, do you have that planning commission meeting? So we, the February Planning Commission date, Mr. Panacal, do you have it handy?
I do not, Mr. Panacal, you have the date.
Sorry.
It is February 27th. It is February 27th, Rich. Is that smart on your calendar? That's the fourth Tuesday of the month. February 27th, I believe, is the meeting, sir.
Mr. Sanchez, why don't we work with you? I will commit to reaching out to you tomorrow and we'll work with you toward whatever avenue is appropriate in your mind to give the neighbors plenty of opportunity to be heard at a private neighbors' meeting prior to the planning commission. Is that satisfactory?
Fantastic.
Could you include the township manager in that conversation?
Of course.
Thank you.
But then don't pass it.
One more outburst, Ms. Layman. Deputy Chief Malloy, could you please escort Ms. Layman out of the proceeding, please? I'm tired of you disrupting a, a meeting that people are trying to get some resolution to, an issue.
I just want you to know you're not...
Please leave the room.
I want you to know that you're not explaining to the residents...
I said, please leave the room.
I will. And please explain that they will not have...
Please leave. Please leave. Thank you.
I will. Thank you. Leading now, Henry.
As you were saying.
Mr. Chairman, we will reach out to Mr. Manfredi, your township manager, and will coordinate with Mr. Manfredi and with Commissioner Sanchez to conduct some avenue by which a public meeting can occur with the neighbors outside the context of your formal planning commission prior to the formal planning commission meeting in February, whenever that date is.
It's the 27th.
27th.
27th, okay. So we'll do that through Mr. Manfredi and Commissioner Sanchez. We'll have a meeting with the neighbors outside the formal context of the planning commission. Then we'll go to the planning commission, then we'll go to your committee, then we'll come back to you with whatever the result of that discussion, those discussions are, and ask you to advertise after that.
Could we document, Mr. Manfredi?
To be clear, it will not be a township meeting, it will be an applicant's meeting and they're coordinating it with us so that we can disseminate information, but it is an applicant's meeting, not a township meeting.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Open to the neighborhood, the neighborhood.
Open to the neighborhood, but not conducted by the township.
Correct.
Now, before we see...
Ms. Lippa has a question.
...your board have always been...
Excuse me, ma'am.
I'll make sure you know.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Please, please don't interrupt. You'll get answers to whatever question.
I'm sorry, I called.
I'll make sure you know.
Out of control there.
Before we, I'll let Commissioner Heckren and Spiegelman ask questions, then I want to ask counsel for, because there's a motion on the floor that was seconded and it sounds like that has to be rescinded.
The motion was just for, to direct the manager to forward it to planning, it wasn't at, it was not attached to a date, so the manager has instructions for, and the applicant's agreeable to February, so that's...
And we'll just reiterate that so everyone knows, my understanding that at this moment in time, there's been a motion and a second to direct me to send to the planning commission, but that will not occur until after such time that there have been sufficient neighborhood meetings conducted by the applicant with information disseminated to the public through our various means, Facebook and however else, but it will be an applicant meeting, not a township-conducted meeting, prior to the February 27th as a target date, as a target date. But if things don't go, that, that may change, but that would come back here to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Heckren, then?
Thank you, President Oger. I actually wanted to ask a clarifying question, I don't think, Mr. Coles, you can answer this. Does the applicant in fact currently own the property? Have you... Have you closed on the property?
Property is under agreement. The applicant is not title owner of the property, the applicant is equitable owner of the property.
So, the reason I ask that is I don't want there to be.
All three parcels?
All three parcels, equitable owner, under agreement on all three parcels, not yet closed on.
Understood. So, there's been a number of instances where the idea of a community center has been raised this evening, and I think it's important for folks here, and those who are going to watch this at home, this isn't an open bidding process, where somebody's taking applications for a use on a property, of somebody who has purchased the property, and is trying to figure out what to do with it, under the code that we have. So, we, as a commissioner, I would support the idea of us exploring other opportunities throughout the township for community recreation spaces, but this is not an open parcel at the moment, it is owned by a private developer.
That's incorrect.
One thing I want to say is it's not incorrect. We are under agreement, and we're in a binding agreement, which is only voidable by us, should certain conditions not be satisfied. This is not a property that's on the market today, simply because it hasn't yet changed hands. And I'm just a little concerned about this perhaps drifting a little too far in one direction. What I'm hearing now is sufficient neighbors' meetings for a movable date at some future time, that's yet to be, you know, decided upon. I think what we're saying is, what we started by saying is, we'd like very much to start this process with you, and go to the planning commission on January 23rd. What you heard just recently was a concession, and, okay, let's push it back to February, so we can coordinate with Mr. Manfredi and Commissioner Sanchez to have a private, not township, meeting, where the neighbors will have an opportunity to have some input outside the formal context of the planning commission. But we would like to do that, we would like to do that, and then we'd like to go to your planning commission in February. I'm a little uncomfortable with the notion that we're going to leave here, potentially, with a, well, we're going to have sufficient neighbors' meetings, to at some point in time in the future, have somebody else decide when we might get on some planning commission, whenever. I'd like to have, we'd like to have some idea of having started a process here.
Mr. Coles, I think what I was saying is, the target date was the February 27th, but maybe there would be more than one neighbors' meeting, held by you. In other words, maybe one isn't enough, maybe it had to be two, maybe it had to be three, in order to generate enough information to answer the commissioners' questions, as well as get the planning commission input, before it comes back at a date in the future. And I was just was trying to make the point that it may not be a date certain, it's a target date, that if you're saying it would go to Commissioner Sanchez, what if Commissioner Sanchez feels that residents in his neighborhood didn't have sufficient opportunity, and they need to meet beyond the planning commission meeting, February 27th? That was my only point of opening that up. It's not to say it's intended.
Commissioner Spiegel.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner Heckler, for making your point regarding ownership. With specific regard to the issue of sufficient meetings, Mr. Coles, first of all, look, I certainly not mean to, you know, beat up on you in any way, really, I do appreciate your openness and your communication, and your willingness, there was already a compromise regarding the planning commission date, that's a good thing to see, compromise. But just for the record, I know you know this intellectually, but I guess I want to hear myself saying this to you, and know that, and have the neighbors know, that I said this to you, that we said this to you. The neighbor meetings are an essential part, you know, the first, and maybe most essential part, of the vetting process, of the question of, is this development, is this zoning change, and is this text amendment, and the development behind it, right for this location for Abington Township? That is, that's the question. The neighbor meetings, and what happens there, and the compromises, and that the neighbors are heard and respected, but also have agency and input, that is a crucial part of this process. So, I, you know, just so, you know, I understand, you have, there are dates, you have, you know, those trigger dates, target dates, you need to meet. Having those neighborhood meetings isn't, the fact that they occur doesn't automatically mean that when we take the vote to advertise, that that's going to be a yes vote. It's really about what happens in those neighbor meetings. And again, I know you know that intellectually, but I need, the neighbors need to know that, too. There's nothing automatic, there's not like, okay, well, you've bought the, you've bought a yes vote on the motion to advertise, by agreeing to the neighbors' meetings. It's about what happens there at the neighbors' meetings, with a lot more folks than are present here.
And those neighbors, and probably more than neighbors that are here this evening, are going to be at that upcoming meeting, and they're going to be telling you precisely what happened at those private meetings, and how amenable you are.
I'll be there, actually, I'll be there at those neighbor meetings, and some of my, some of the residents I represent will be there, so, you'll see this beautiful face yet again. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask a question of council?
You have a motion and a second on the floor, and at some point, you'll have to.
We're in the middle of going, yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, you said we're okay with the motion that's on the floor.
You have a motion and a second on the floor, does anyone need it explained to them? Do you understand where you are?
That's the motion made by Commissioner Sanchez, correct?
Correct.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
You're still on public comment, I'm just letting you know that you have a motion and second on the floor.
I understand, but we have to take public comment on the motion, now that we actually have a formal motion in front of us.
That is correct.
Take your time, sir. Come on, yes, sir.
I just wanted to request a clarification from council. I heard him state that the property was currently equitably owned by the purchaser. That is not legal title, as I understand, and what I would like to hear is whether the failure of this zoning proposal gives the developer the way out of the agreement of sale.
Sure it does.
Mr. Coles, did you want to answer that, so we can move on briefly, if you could, please?
Well, I'd like to just first say, I'm not sure why title of this property became important. I don't, the applicant, or anybody who asked for a rezoning, doesn't have to have titled any property. Anybody could ask for a rezoning. I could ask for a rezoning of my neighbor's property tomorrow, and be fully within my rights to stand before this Board of Commissioners, and ask that a parcel of property be rezoned. It's not a zoning hearing board application. And there are ways out of this agreement, it's a private agreement between two parties, there are any number of ways for the buyer to terminate the agreement, prior to the expiration of the due diligence period.
All right, yes, sir. Name and address, please.
David Zuplansky, 2967 Lincoln Ave, Glen Side, PA 19038. I would say to the august body here, and the people of Abington, to please watch carefully the people that put this forward, that allow this process to go forward. Your vote in the voting booth, to see who is commissioner, keep your mind on this, I'm asking the commissioners to be on the right side of history, and Abington has a wonderful history. And I look at that plaque there, Abington Hall, 1839. I don't think the people back then were envisioning that we were going to change this township into a city. It walks like a duck, it looks like a duck, it is a duck. When you look at that, and how big it is, and how many people will be occupying it, in the center of Abington, please do not allow this to happen. Vote no. I don't know about the ramifications of the second and so forth, but I would ask you, I know most of you have a reticence about that, just looking at it, please, vote no on it now, and just squash it. And they can go through another process, trying to get through the zoning that Commissioner Klein put forth, rather than trying to rezone everything, and we don't know the ramifications that are going to take place all over the township, when people are trying to put more of these things in. I'm a senior myself, but I see the children having, and the Ryan, I know he owns it, but he'll probably sell it if he can't do something with it, and I would not encourage him. It's just about money, people. I worked for a big corporation once, and I know how things work. This is about money, it's not about the quality of life at Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any other public comments, or the motion? Yes, sir.
Can I have one second? Can I see everybody who wants to.
Sir, can you come to?
Can you raise your hand?
Sir, could you come to the microphone, please?
I would just like the residents the opportunity to vote. Can you just raise your hand, if you want a no vote? Just raise your hand, and keep them up, so everybody can see. I think the neighbors have spoken, and I hope you guys will take this into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? If there are none, any comments before we vote from the commissioners? Hearing none, all, you've heard the motion, it's been properly seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It seems like it was right down the middle.
Can you, yeah.
Let me do a hand.
It would be helpful for the recording secretary, if we see a show of hands.
Show of hands, all those in favor, please indicate by a show of hands. Eight, seven, okay. So, the motion is approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Before we move on to our next agenda item, which is public safety, I would ask for a brief permission, to let those who want to leave, do so. If we may resume at this time, at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. We have no formal agenda, but I do have an announcement this evening. The Abington Police Department will be rolling out a new program later this month. This program is called APARE, and it stands for Abington Police Assisting in Recovery. It's a program for people seeking treatment for substance abuse. The commissioners will be receiving more information in tomorrow's packets about this program, and the public will be able to learn more about the program very soon, and we can also discuss it further at the next month's public safety meeting, to answer other questions. Thank you, that's then tomorrow's agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Works.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, Public Works has two items on the agenda. The first is PA 1, which is to consider two motions. One is a motion to reject all bids submitted for the Ardsley Wildlife Sanctuary project, as advertised and submitted on December 20th, 2017, and reapprove the project, and authorize rebidding of this project, with reduced scope, and a motion to approve the Ardsley Wildlife Sanctuary project, with a reduced scope, and authorize advertisement of same, and I so move.
Second, it's been moved to second, comments from commissioners, staff, any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion passes.
And the second item is item BOCO 1, which is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-010, approving a township of Abington Board of Commissioners policy, establishing a policy governing certain rules of order, board and committee agendas, public participation, and scope of committees, and I so move.
Second, it's been moved to second, comments from commissioners, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Richard Manfredi?
Yeah, I just, since we haven't talked about this in detail, just want to touch on four things. Number one, on page four, apologize, there's a typo, it's meant to say not disrupt public meetings, instead of disrupt public meetings. So, apologize, it's kind of interesting. But, in any event, just real quick, this really is meant to update and reaffirm the policies developed in 2016, introduce and generally follow Robert's Rules of Order for Parliamentary Procedure. It introduces more, a more traditional agenda with unfinished business, new business, and it sets the consent agenda, which allows you to combine routine, or things for one vote. And then, it also makes clear that the scope of the code committee isn't just code enforcement, but the administrative code of the township, that, you know, any ordinance would go before that committee. Though really, the major changes, it also formally adopts changes we've made incrementally, such as the fiscal impact on the agenda, the public bid requirements, and the general format. You know, minor, it's really what this is.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any other comments, commissioners or staff, any from residents, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, the motion passes.
And just for clarification, Mr. Luker, I apologize, you were quick on that one. That was with the amendments that Mr. Manfredi mentioned at the beginning. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. President, that confirms the agenda of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Vice President Klein, Commissioner, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker, and I'd like to call on the Township Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, Blumenthal, through the treasurer's report.
What am I, this evening?
Can I tell you later?
First of all, I want to make a comment about clarification, that a former speaker spoke at the podium, Ms. Lehman, that I am required by law to have a deputy treasurer, I'm required by law to have a deputy tax collector, and the deputy is supposed to act on my behalf, if I am sick, or I can't do the job, until somebody else is appointed. I just wanted to make that clear.
And all due respect, Mr. Blumenthal, I just wanted to ward off any debate at that time.
Understood.
You bringing it up at this time, is it more appropriate? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Now, you want to hear my report? I'm not going to make this one brief.
Please.
Money's deposited by the various departments into Republic Bank for the month of December, was $1,002,700,020. Last year, $1,528,019, a decrease of $2,579,99. Year-to-date, total for the year was $62,759,762. Prior year was $61,723,829, with an increase of $1,035,933. As for the monies transferred for real estate taxes, to the Finance Department for the month of December, we deposited $69,006,4, compared to December of '16, was $2,213,61, with a decrease of $1,52,297. Year-to-date, we collected $26,734,864, balance to collect of $374,931. I want to make a comment about this, probably over the last 12 years that I've been here, it's always been 98% year-to-date collected, and 2% leftover, which is pretty much across Montgomery County. This year, we're at 99.1% left. Our leanness is much less, and I settle out with the county tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. That's my report. Thank you.
Good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC 1, motion to A, approve the November expenditure that was previously circulated to the board, in the amount of $4,019,912.35, and salaries and wages in the amount of And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2018, and I so move.
Second, it's been moved to second, any comments from commissioners or staff, any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, this is roll call.
It's a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioners Myers?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
People, see that?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Heckler?
Yes.
Biederman?
Yes.
Westgate?
Yes.
Komen?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Yes.
FC 2, motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for November 2017, as previously circulated to the board. Advance and travel expense reports were $0.909.68, respectively.
11th month expenses totaled $26,161.99, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 3, motion to approve the clearing fund and deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of November as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of November 2017 were $20,624.31 and $20,061.49, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and disbursements for the month of November 2017 were $8,781.71 and $208.00, respectively, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second it. Comments from commissioners? From staff? From residents? There is none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 4, motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-007, authorizing the Finance Director and his, his/her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by the first-class township, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second it. Comments from commissioners or staff? Or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 5, motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-009, authorizing the disposition of certain finance office records as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second it. Comments from commissioners? Staff? Or residents? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. This concludes our formal agenda for the evening, so at this time, I'll open the floor up for comments from the public. Name and address for the record, please.
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I've been waiting for that day for 13 years. So, I normally am escorted by a very handsome man that I'm married to. Tonight, I got a handsome man to escort me out twice. It's great. So, the finest, the very nice guys that we have for our police officers here, and thank you for allowing me back. I, so, Mr. Blumenthal, I'll apologize for what might be a misunderstanding. I will not apologize for the lack of transparency, and to let you know that that very question I asked to have answered before I came to this meeting, and as per usual, I was denied the answer. So, that, that's what has to change in this township, and there is certainly some concern about how many people are employed and how many would need to be employed in that office. So, yeah, and if you wanna talk about it, if you wanna talk about it later, I'm, I'm happy to do so.
I'm tired of this.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk about it, okay?
Grab your stuff here.
But there is a concern about that. I, I've mentioned that concern many times, and I would like to have it addressed. So, if Mr. Blumenthal, Mr. Manfredi, anybody would like to...
Jay, please.
Same escort. Okay. So, the other thing that I, I just wanna say is that what happened tonight is a travesty, but it is something that the residents of Abington are beginning to learn, that it takes only eight votes. And so, some of you who had some very agitated people call you, or email you, or ask you what the heck you were doing, got to vote no, but it only takes eight to vote yes, and so the project can go through anyhow. And so, we thank all of you who voted no, and I thank some of you who had hard questions and who brought up the things that the residents wanted to hear. The one thing that is missing is that the only leverage that you had about going forward and not attacking the residents in the process, and costing them money, and their time, and everything else, was to allow them to have all that information without any commitment to it going forward. And that was your only leverage on behalf of the residents you served. So those of you who voted yes, just stab those residents in the back. It's really something that has to be thought about. Thank you to those who voted no.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, we'll take closing comments from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Bowman.
No comment tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners DePoele.
Yeah. Our first annual New Year's Eve party at the VFW was a huge success. We had over 120 residents in attendance. So now, at this time, the Ardsley Community Association are gonna start planning our eight events for this year, and all our events are open to all township residents.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works Department for that blizzard we had, or whatever they called it, and how they came. They picked up the trash, they, they shoveled, they, they plowed, they did whatever, and I think they did a fantastic job, and we should be very proud of our Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vahis.
On January 1st, when most of us were celebrating, the Stack family of Pleasant Avenue and Glen Side Gardens were running away from the house, which was on fire. I wanna thank the brave men and women of our fire department who came out and saved the day. The Stacks sa, left the house safe, no, no injuries, although substantial damage was done to their property. I was so proud of our community, which has rallied around the Stack family. We've raised thousands of dollars to get them through this difficult time. The Stacks are deeply touched, and they're very grateful for everyone's support. So, on behalf of the Stack family, I wanna thank the residents of Abington Township, Glen Side, Pennsylvania especially, and I look forward to working for the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Relating directly to what, to Commissioner Vahis' comment, um, this, as everyone knows, this holiday season and the period just after, it was extraordinarily busy for our 100% volunteer Abington Fire Department. And, you know, Commissioner Vahis mentioned the, the fire in Glen Side Gardens. I know that Commissioner Brodsky's gonna, you know, mention the, the fire that occurred in his ward that, that took the house of very close friends of mine, but, and, you know, there was also the, the fire at the Brian O'Sheverly showroom. We are extraordinarily fortunate to be protected by this group of volunteers from right here in our community, so I just wanna give them a very special Happy New Year and, you know, express my profound gratitude, particularly to the Abington Fire Company right here in Ward 11, our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Heckler.
Thank you, President Lucker. I think, given the lateness of the hour, I will limit my comments to welcoming Commissioners Thompson and Vahis. I look forward to working with both of you, and I appreciated your thoughtful comments and questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
I'm not accustomed to this seat, but I love it. Thank you, President Lucker. I am sitting in the seat that Commissioner Michael Gillespie held for many years, so I do, I do appreciate that. And also, in the interest of time, I will tell you about the Powell Concert at the Keswick featuring Real Diamond, who was a Neil Diamond tribute artist, on March 10th. I'll tell you about that later.
Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky.
Also, in the interest of time, I will keep my comments short. So, I wanna echo what Commissioner Spiegelman had to say about our fire department. There was a tragedy in that a family lost their house over, just after the Christmas holiday, and I wanna appreciate not just the fire department for their hard work, but also Commissioner Spiegelman for stepping up and assisting the family. If anyone has any contributions, or wants to make any types of donations, or there's a, I think, a GoFundMe page that Commissioner Spiegelman set up, so that's appreciated to assist the family, it's greatly appreciated. And in connection with that, I also, not only in addition to thanking the fire department, would like to also thank the Public Works Department, because I got a call afterwards that the road was still icy, and there were still some dangerous conditions, and I contacted Public Works, and they were very right on top of it. They came out, I got a thank you call. Public Works did a great job insulting that road and getting that taken care of, so these people who had to get to access to that property were there. So, I appreciate that. It's a tragedy. Hopefully, we have no more tragedies in Abington Township, no more fires, but it is appreciated for all those who stepped up, and we'll go from there. Other than that, have a great night.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Lucker. I also wanna echo the thank yous to the Public Works Department. I was receiving emails at random times, random locations, and the department was so quickly responsive that it was, I was getting emails back thanking our Public Works for fixing problems before I even was able to let people know that help was on the way. So, thank you to everybody that worked overtime in the past week or so. Thank you to the fire department and the police department for keeping us safe during these difficult times with the difficult weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePlacido.
Thank you, President Lucker. And I like my seat, too. Yeah, it's a good view. This is different. I was over there. Wow. What a, what a start to this year, eight, seven. This is gonna be a fun one. Sure is. As always, when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing this evening.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just echoing some sentiments voiced here earlier about the fire department. Tonight, while we sat here, there was a viewing for Lieutenant Luterno from the Philadelphia Fire Department, and I just wanna express my gratitude to all our first responders that are in here, putting their lives on the line for us. Really appreciate it, and we're really glad to have your service. Also, we're gonna be doing a park cleanup this Saturday at 1:00 PM at the North Hills Park, so if you wanna come out and help us out with the memory of Dr. King, please volunteer, help your community, and let's clean up our park. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Klein.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little promoting for Commissioner Sanchez. Over the last couple months, the township has received two significant grants that will further expand the efforts that we put forth in the Master Bike Plan and walkability, which will affect Commissioner Sanchez's, Commissioner DePlacido's, Commissioner Rothman, and I believe Commissioner Brodsky's wards, in making connections from Jenkentown to the Penny Pack Trail. And having worked on the Master Bike Plan and sitting on the planning commission in the county, it's great to see this, this, these things coming to fruition. So I appreciate all the work that was done by staff, consultants, the manager's office, and the commissioners that were involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Klein. In closing, I just wanna make one quick statement. Chief Livinggood, if I'm not mistaken, this may be your last formal board meeting, correct?
You are correct, Mr. President.
After how many years, sir?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Fortunately, not forty-five meetings.
And I think that also applies to Fire Marshal Ken Clark, so thank you both, but we'll, we'll deal with that further than this.
First, Dr. Martin Luther King Service Monday at the high school, the 15th, at 12 noon. Pastor Charles Kwan, who's a very distinguished pastor of Bethlehem Baptist Church in Springhouse, although it's not in Abington, he's a dear friend and a mentor of many pastors in the area. And we're gonna give a special recognition award to Mrs. Romaine Crawford, the general manager of the Willa Grove Park. I was told to stop at Willa Grove Park, don't say mall, but she's a very outstanding, a very dynamic personality, and I think it's duly noted that we're gonna honor her. Lastly, three commissioners, Commissioner Vahis, Spiegelman, and Brodsky gave kudos to the fire department. I called Deputy Assistant Fire Marshal John Ward today and got some interesting statistics. In the last two weeks, since Christmas Day, the five fire companies have responded to 100 emergency calls, including four building fires with significant losses. The firefighters have logged a total of 1,600 hours of service in a two-week period of time, which that amount of hours typically is accountable, is a monthly number. So, to the fire companies, to the fire chiefs, to the deputy fire chiefs, to all you guys who went out there, not to mention the cold that they endured those two weeks, I think it's, it's just a dedication that, I, I don't even know the words to say, but thank you to all, all the firefighters and EMS responders on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. So, without further ado, there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move. Thank you for attending.